All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We have two meetings. The first one is a quick one, and it's the sewer commissioners. So welcome to the sewer commissioners' meeting of July 28th. This meeting is being recorded and also broadcast on Zoom. If anyone has a question online, please put in your name and address in the Q and A. If you have a question and you're in the room, just raise your hand to signal me, and I will ask you to let us know your question. Just to go around to ensure we have a quorum, if you want to introduce yourself.
Jamie Stevens.
I'm Jennifer Stacey.
I'm Mark Lamb.
Dottie Full Genetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
All right, we're ready to go. So the first item on our agenda is discussion and vote, assessment of sewer privilege fees for 43 South Street Residential.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attached to your package is a memo from Public Works regarding 43 South Street. This is the result of a property that was created when 545 Foundry Street was subdivided into two separate lots, I believe, taking advantage of the zoning that was adopted in this district.
Yeah, the planning department confirmed that that was within scope.
Great. That zoning was adopted to encourage certain denser uses and things like that in a furnace village area of town in 106. And so this is a subdivision of the lot and will create a new single-family home. And the Public Works Department is recommending the assessment of one SBU, one sewer betterment unit, at the price of the betterments that were levied in 2020 and 2021, which is $19,837. And I concur.
All right. So just for people at home, when the sewer was put in, the betterments were divided up amongst the businesses and residential units in that area. So if somebody wants to tie into it now, and we have the excess capacity to do it, this board votes on it. And we, you know, obviously, they can't tie in for free, so they're paying the same betterment unit as the folks that have already tied in. So we've done this quite regularly. It's a good sign for the economic development in that area when this happens, when other people, organizations, residential houses want to tie into the sewer. So does anyone have any questions? Jamie, start on your end.
No questions, Siggy.
No questions, pretty standard.
No questions.
No questions.
All right. Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
I move that 43 South Street be assessed a privilege fee equivalent to one SBU or $19,837.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And next, we'll just do, I'd like to have a motion for acceptance of the minutes dated June 2nd, 2025.
So moved, Barger.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Barger.
Second.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. That was the fastest meeting. So we actually should have slowed it down a little because we have to wait till 6:05 after the select board meeting.
Sorry, I'm used to pledge allegiance.
Welcome to the July 28th Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live and will be available to watch on ECAT. It is also on Zoom, so if people are watching from home and they have a question, please put your question into the Q and A with your address and your name. And we'll go around and introduce ourselves again for this one to ensure we have a quorum.
Jamie Stevens.
Jennifer Stacey.
Mark Lamb.
Dottie Full Genetti.
Craig Barger.
And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the black United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we haven't met in a couple of weeks, so it's nice to see the room filled with people. The first item that we have on the agenda is recognizing the members of promoting a sustainable Easton. Connor, do you want to make the introduction to this?
Sure, thank you. So as the board is aware, promoting a sustainable Easton was a committee, a large committee of 19 members, overwhelmingly citizens of Easton, that was formed by a vote of residents at the town meeting in May of 2024 to go through the town and the school's finances and make a recommendation to the public on sustaining our services. We all know that at the end of the day, the electorate did not co-sign that on June 10th, but that doesn't take away the fact that the members of this committee gave an enormous amount of time and energy, thoughtfulness, and of themselves and their schedule, hundreds of hours of meetings, open houses, going to community events, you know, holding events small and large, bringing hundreds of people into open houses and getting involved in the budget earlier than people typically do. And that deserves to be recognized. It was an extraordinary lift, and the diversity of expertise and opinion on the committee was incredible. You know, I'll say, as a practitioner in municipal finance, often the engagement is at the very end when hard budget choices have to be voted on, and people are upset about what the ramifications are. It's not often that you're going to have people involved for the course of an entire year, going through your various choices and what those ramifications could be, what your options are. And we had people who had been on finance committee, elected officials, and some folks who were brand-new and had never served on a public committee before. That's obviously quite the committee to choose to jump in on for your first time. But as you know, when you create committees, sometimes there's concern of having a really large roster because it's hard to kind of keep the gravity there and keep everyone going. And with 19 people, the worry was that you wouldn't have a lot of people showing up, and the attendance rate was phenomenal. I don't think we had more than one or two people miss a meeting at a time for what were five-hour-long meetings. And that's not an exaggeration. That were really hard meetings and sometimes painful discussions and going into, you know, talking about things that can be uncomfortable and challenging for people. And everyone just did such a great job and obviously disappointed with where the budget for fiscal '26 landed, but that's certainly not, in my judgment, any reflection of a lack of effort by this group of citizens. So I think their work is just truly extraordinary. And although the override failed, I still think that there's an immense amount of value in the compilation, verification, collation of all of this public finance information to set a baseline of where we're moving from here so that hopefully, as a community, we can continue to understand the impacts of the electoral and financial choices that we're going to be making because the budget challenges are certainly not over. And heading into fiscal '27, there's going to be a lot of really significant challenges and reductions to services on top of what we've done to get into this year. And so having that work as a baseline is invaluable. And I know I speak for the whole board, saying we appreciate so much all those residents putting in all that time.
Exactly. I'm going to ask the board members if they want to make comments, and then I'm going to give out certificates of appreciation.
Yeah, so I can't convey and show my appreciation enough for all that the committee did, the PACE Committee, all the members, and the countless hours. And as we talk about bandwidth, none of us have what that took, right? Including those members who sacrificed a lot of their personal, professional lives to be there on those late nights, and many, many of them, right? Not just the meeting dates, but as Connor mentioned, all the open houses, all the opportunities we provided the constituents of this town to learn from that group, and all the countless hours of work and documents that they combed through, which is nothing short of amazing. So those of you that are here tonight, thank you. To your fellow members that are not here tonight, thank you. As a member of the Budget Subcommittee, a lot of the work that we'll do moving forward, you guys, as Connor mentioned, laid amazing groundwork for what's going to help us over this next year, which will be more challenging for the financial position of the town from a structural revenue deficit, but, or structural deficit. So all that work is not in vain. It's, we will continue to refer to it in our meetings monthly, and we will use it to complete our homework as we get ready to convey to the community what's, what next steps look like, which are very, very, very challenging. So thank you all immensely. Thank you.
You left nothing to say. That was perfect. I will echo what Jamie says because he said it very eloquently. But thank you so much. Also, on the Budget Subcommittee, and we had an interesting, thoughtful discussion prior to this meeting about how we're going to take the hard work that this group did, and as Jamie said, use it for figuring out where the future is from here in terms of, you know, what comes after and how we have to still grapple with these problems. It's not going away. So thank you, because it was a lot of time, and I saw many of you out there fighting the good fight on social media and trying to bring information and facts to people. And everything everyone did here was greatly appreciated. So thank you so much. You know, it's a huge undertaking to commit to several hours of meetings multiple times a month, and, you know, it's, just thank you. It's a huge, huge commitment, so.
I don't think there's a group in town that worked as hot as you guys this past year. I, I don't think I could have done what you guys did. That was a massive, incredible lift. To their point, it's absolutely not in vain. When we did the Audit Committee years and years ago, we still used the results of that. You know, we learned, I learned by watching you guys, stuff that even I was unsure of, and you guys uncovered it. And it did reveal a lot. You guys became champions of the town, you know, sharing your knowledge with, with people in your circles. We learned a lot about what this town prioritizes and how to work with that. I think that's, that's where we're at right now, is okay, we went through this entire process, it's absolutely not in vain. And we learned a lot about what this community prioritizes and how do we move forward from that. I, I don't think your job is over. I, you know, there's something has to be done as we move forward. I just, we just don't know quite what it is yet, but you guys will know when we get there. And thank you so much for all of you done.
My colleagues always take up all the bandwidth, you know, for, for Dottie and I at the end, but I want to express my appreciation, my sincere appreciation to all the work that you folks did. And as folks have said, it's not in vain, it's a good, it's a good basis for going forward, particularly for fiscal '27. And I just want to acknowledge Tom Broussard and Nancy Donahue for the work, the leadership that they, that they provided, put in. And I can't think of two people that I'm more proud of in this town than those two for what they did. So thank you very, very much.
Agreed. Having the privilege of being a part of this committee, I was really surprised by a lot of things, and one was that 19 people really showed up and we didn't have quorum issues. I would have lost a week's pay on that one because that usually is a big problem. And not just showing up, but really showing up and participating, you know, doing the homework, learning alongside each other. We purposefully appointed people that in the beginning, in the interview, said that they were going to challenge, challenge these norms, so to speak, and they, they did, and they were great. And, you know, it made me think about things in a different way than I normally do, challenged me as well, and challenged each other in the group. And I just am so happy. I feel like the new people that I've met, I really liked everybody on that committee, and I hope that we stay connected, hopefully for something more fun than the long meetings. So with that, I'm going to make these presentations. So the first one that I have is for Tom Broussard. Tom, you, oops, you have a certificate of appreciation that's not in there tight, and you also have a letter from the Select Board.
Thank you so much, Tom. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you.
Nancy? This is for Nancy Donahue, your certificate of appreciation, and also a letter from Connor. Next, we have Chris Aker. Chris is not here. Jocelyn, we met for so long, a new baby was grown in the process. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Dr. Cabral is not here. Jim Hamilton is not here. Patrick Helen, come on up.
So roll these days.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
With the ball.
Congratulations. Very much. Come on up. I think Denise was one of the people in the beginning that you really had a lot of great ideas, you carried them through, you really, you really caused us to really look at things in a different way, and I really am grateful for that. It was really great to work with you. Chris Kohn. Here he is, back there. Chris used his experience from the Planning Board and different committees over the years, and really appreciate that. Kathy is not here, Kathy Mallett. Chris Mills is not here. Wendy Knightengill, is Wendy here? Nope, she's not here. She was at the last meeting. Connor? We have one for you. Wait a second.
Come on up.
Now I'm out of order. Hold on a second, I might have.
Yeah.
Oh, no, is it?
That's okay. I mean, I'm one of-
Sorry, you didn't get it.
I'm one of the people who signed it, so that would have been weird. I don't think you have one either.
You're on the list, so.
That's okay.
Well, we couldn't have done it without you. Okay.
It's in spirit, thank you.
Marissa? Marissa, you did a great job representing the school's perspective and also, you know, all of the events we went to, the people that contributed. I'll remember all the work that you did with that as well. Jennifer Starr. Jen, as if you didn't have your plate full already, being a part of this committee, really appreciate everything that you contributed. Last one is Andrea Starkevsky, the financial person from the schools, and she's not able to be here either. But really hope that we can stay connected because I think that there's more opportunities to work together, not like the last, you know, commitment, but maybe something a little bit kindler, gentler. And, you know, we really appreciate everything that you stood, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you don't have to feel uncomfortable if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting. All right, next on the agenda, we have the recognition of Purple Heart Day. Craig, do you want to read the proclamation?
Absolutely. The Town of Easton Proclamation, Purple Heart Town, August 7th, 2025. Whereas the people of the Town of Easton have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces for the good of all, and whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Easton who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice, and whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded in action while engaged in combat, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was created as the Badge of Military Merit on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Initially, it, it was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word, quote, "merit", unquote, sewn upon it. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart, and whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day, and now therefore be it proclaimed, we, the Easton Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Easton, go on record to hereby proclaim, Easton, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart Town honoring the sacrifice and service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were killed or wounded by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Also be it proclaimed, we, the Town of Easton, will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day and urge the people and organizations of Easton to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients. Signed this day, August 7th, Dottie Full Genetti, Chairperson, Craig Barger, Vice Chair, Mark Lamb, Jamie Stevens, and Jennifer Stacey, Select Board Members.
Excellent. Thank you, Craig, and welcome.
Thank you. So unfortunately, our current VSO, Jason Snyder, couldn't be here tonight. He had a scheduled PTO day. So I just have a couple of comments on his behalf and our department's behalf. So back 10 years ago, it actually just struck me that it was 10 years ago that our then Veteran Service Officer, Sue Ann Tom, asked the Select Board to take this action and declare Easton a Purple Heart Town for all the reasons listed in the proclamation. Every year since, we've set aside time to remember and reflect on the sacrifices of those brave men and women who've earned this distinction after sustaining injuries while serving in the armed forces. For some, the medal was awarded posthumously, as Craig said, as they made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Since its creation, I think it's notable that there have been over 2 million Purple Hearts awarded. That number struck me. It seems quite amazing. As in the past, we will be holding a ceremony on the 7th, which is a Thursday this year, here at Town Hall, beginning at 9:00 a.m., and we invite the community to join us to honor those who have been awarded the medal with the reading of the proclamation, some remarks, a moment of silence, and the raising of the Purple Heart flag that will be flown for the day. Thanks to generous donation from Stonehill, we will once again be able to have a gathering after with some light refreshments here in the Corona Meeting Room. In the case of inclement weather, we will move indoors. If there are any members of the public who would like to discuss participating in the ceremony or honoring a loved one as part of the ceremony, I encourage them to reach out to our Veteran Service Officer, Jason Snyder, with the team email of veterans, with the S, at easton.m-a.us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Jamie, I'd love to have you make a comment, if you'd like, as our veteran on the Select Board.
Yeah, this is, well, one of the more emotional ceremonies that you can attend, and I remember the first one that I attended, and I believe Cory had been the facilitator at the time, Cory Honan. And we had some Purple Heart members speak, and it's, it's powerful. I was fortunate enough to have never been wounded, and, but a lot of our colleagues have been. And as you mentioned, Kristen, thank you for pointing out the statistic that over 2 million members of our armed forces have, you know, been awarded the Purple Heart. To include my, I have an uncle who fought in World War II, at the Battle of the Boche, and received a Purple Heart. So it's a really important, and I'm very proud of this town for supporting it and for recognizing Purple Heart Day. So thank you, Kristen, to you and your team for the work you do and, and the organization of all of these wonderful events.
Great. Anyone else? Awesome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have some licenses and applications. The first one is an application of Shive Om Liquor Corporation, 690 Depot Street, Union 8, for a change of doing business as of an, of an existing Section 15 off-premises all alcohol beverages license from independent liquors to New World Wine and Spirits.
We're joined by Attorney Porter for the applicant.
Hello.
Evening.
So it seems like we just had this in front of us. At first, I thought it was a duplicate, and then I realized that the last one was a change of location a couple of weeks ago, and this is going to be a change in DBA.
Correct. Yeah, so the, shockingly enough, the change of location has already been approved by ABCC, which is very surprising. But before the board now is just a change of DBA with the move there. These folks have decided to try to rebrand the store, so it'll be changing from Independent Liquors to New World's Wine and Spirits. But other than that, there's no other changes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
Now that it's, now that your change of location is approved, when do you think they'll, they'll be in there for business?
Yeah, I think they, they're starting construction now. Obviously, they wanted to get all the approvals in place before they started pumping some money into it. But yeah, hopefully, within the, you know, next couple of months or so, I would imagine.
Well, that's great. Congratulations on that. Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So I move to approve the application of Shive Om Liquor Corporation, 690 Depot Street, Unit 8, for a change of DBA of an existing Section 15 off-premises all alcohol beverage license from independent liquors to New World Wine and Spirits.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, and Bill switches with the new place.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have a road closure request. Oliver Street from Elm Street to Mechanic Street for the Tricentennial Block Party on September 6th, 2025. We don't have anyone here for that, right? Oh, sorry.
Jamie Anderson is here.
Do you want to talk, tell us about it, or are you here for questions?
Because just here for questions, really.
Okay. Let me just find this on here. Sorry. So as part of the Easton Tricentennial Celebration, the Easton 300 Block Party coordinators have submitted a request to close the portion of Oliver Street as noted above. This will be on September 6th, which is a Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to accommodate the event, although the block party itself runs from noon to 4:00 p.m. The extended closure will allow for safe setup and breakdown. The plan includes controlled access for vendors, shuttle service from the high school to Governor Ames Estate, and designated handicapped parking at 50 Oliver Street. Police, fire, and DPW have all reviewed and approved the proposed plan. The event coordinator, Jamie Anderson, is going to be present at our meeting and is here to answer any questions. It sounds really great. I live on Elm Street, right off the street from there, so I'm in that park quite often. And I'm glad to see that the road closure has been looked at and approved. I want to just give this opportunity, whether it's you or Craig, want to talk about the block party, what, what does that mean? What kind of fun things are going to be there? Just as an opportunity for promotion. If you want to use the microphone, it doesn't amplify, but ECAT will be able to hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, so the, the block party is going to be one of the most massive events that the town has seen in a while, aside from maybe the parade that just happened a little while ago. We're going to be having a large children's area with bounce houses, a ninja challenge. There's going to be petting zoos, there's an axe-throwing event, there's craft fair, there's local community tables that are going to be there for the businesses or organizations within the town to be able to pass on that information to anybody else in town. And then Shovel Town is going to have a beer garden there as well. We're going to have lawn games set up. It's going to be just a lot of fun. We're also going to have a time capsule opening from the 275th.
That's excellent. And music, right? The Rose Conservatory is going to be performing.
There's going to be music the whole time.
Yep.
Yep, yep. Lots of different groups performing. And we have, actually Dance Express and Personal Best Karate are performing as well.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Great. Well, can't wait.
As, as the Select Board representative on the Tricentennial, it's been my pleasure to work with Dan and Jamie on this, on this project, and thank them very much for their appreciation for allowing us to open the time capsule there. These, these two folks are two of the most incredibly organized people that I've ever had the privilege of working with. And I want to thank you, Jamie, for that. I know Dan's off traveling, but I wanted to thank you for the, for all the efforts that you've put in, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Excellent. Any questions or comments?
I'm just excited for it. So yeah, thank you for all the work. It's, you know, I feel like it's been such a wonderful set of events leading up to this as well. Like it's, I think you guys have taken people's level of expectation and just, you know, continued to exceed it.
Keep raising the bar.
Yeah, keep raising the bar, so I'm really excited, and thank you. I just hope the axe-throwing and the beer-drinking are. It's two axe-throwing, then beer-drinking. Okay, thanks.
Are they the plastic axes? Because there was a-
No, they're real axes. No, they're real axes.
Really?
Yeah, you got to sign a waiver and everything.
Oh, wow. Because when you had it at Stonehill, that event had plastic axes.
Yes, that was indoors as well.
We should do a competition among the Select Board. I'd win, but...
I know.
I'd rather just be part of the beer-drinking.
Mark, anything?
No, I mean, it's obviously looking forward to an incredible event. You guys are continuing. I think people are catching on. Like as the events come out, people are like, these guys are serious. And then each subsequent event, more and more people are attending. So, I mean, this is going to be amazing. Look forward to it.
Yeah. Great. Thanks.
You should sell tickets to park in your driveway.
I could do that. Yeah, yeah. Set up a little beer garden in the driveway.
Craig?
I just, I think I said my piece.
Well, thank you very much. If you'd like to make a motion, Craig?
So I move to approve the road closure requests for the Oliver Street from Elm Street to Mechanic Street for the Tricentennial Block Party on September 6, 2025.
Second.
That's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right. Next, we have a number of one-day liquor licenses. So the first one is Stone Soup LLC, Doing Business As Langwater Farm, 215 Washington Street. And the first one is Taste of Pizza, August 9th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with a storm date of August 10th. Taco Night, August 13th, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., with a storm date of August 14th. And then the rest of these are Community Pizza Nights, August 22nd, from 4 to 8, with a storm date of August 23rd, August 8th, from 4 to 8, with a storm date of August 9th, August 15th, from 4 to 8, with a storm date of August 16th, August 22nd, from 4 to 8, with a storm date of August 23rd, August 29th, from 4 to 8, with a storm date of August 30th. And I imagine, does it, I'm sorry, I'm looking at multiple notes here. Do we need a police detail for those? Kevin?
All events, with the exception of Taste of Pizza, require a police detail.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So I move to approve the, as a slate, the Stone Liquor LLC Doing Businesses Langwater Farm events from August 9th through August 29th.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor?
Dottie, can I just say too, because for Taco Night, if anyone hasn't been there, I mean, their pizza's a slam dunk, but the tacos are unbelievable. We had the opportunity to try them out last Wednesday, so I highly recommend, folks, check it out. It's not, and we're, I'm a taco connoisseur. These are amazing.
Really? I heard people talking about it, so...
It's amazing, so, yeah, check it out.
Nice place to go for dinner. Okay. Next, we have Shovel Town Brewery at the Tricentennial Block Party, the Governor Ames Estate, 25 Oliver Street, September 6, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Frank Altieri is requesting a one-day beer and wine license for the Tricentennial Block Party. Chief Boone recommends four detail officers for the event as a whole, two inside the block party and two for the road closures. So Frank is not able to be here tonight. He sent us a message earlier, so we can just vote.
So I move to approve the Shovel Town Brewery at the Tricentennial Block Party, Governor Ames Estate, 25 Oliver Street, September 6, 2025, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., one-day beer and wine license.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. And then the last one is Stone Hill College, the Metro South Legislative Reception. They have this every year in October, so it's October 9th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. with a storm date of October 10th. They're requesting a one-day beer and wine license for this reception. A police detail is not required.
So I move to approve the Metro South Legislative Reception, one-day beer and wine license for Stone Hill College, 320 Washington Street, October 9th, 2025, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., with a storm date of October 10th.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. All right. Next, we have Human Resources Board Appointment. Catriona Eldemary for a seat expiration on June 30th, 2027. Katerina? Would you want to come up to the desk? And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
That's okay.
So if you want to just introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in this particular committee?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Katrina Eldemary. I've been a resident of Easton for about 23, 22 years. I've come to a stage in my professional career where I have some extra time on my hands and able to, I want to do something as well to potentially give back. I know it sounds a little corny, but give back to the community. When I was working in my professional career, my three daughters had a terrific education in Easton, and I feel that I have some availability to try to do something more, just to give back and assist in a town that we certainly grew to love very much. So that's really my real purpose.
And you have over 30 years of work experience with 20 of them in Human Resources, so...
Correct. Yeah. So my background is predominantly hospitality. So I've worked in the hospitality field and then transitioned into human resources, and that really is where I found my passion. Did most of my professional career in hospitality. Just around COVID, I was, had the opportunity to open a private social club in Boston. And then after that, for about a year and a half, I worked with a construction company in the Quincy area in a human resources capacity as well. And then just last year, decided to create my own small HR consulting business. So that's what I'm currently doing.
Excellent. There's a big need for that.
Yes, I hope so.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you for, nothing corny about giving back and finding that time. Thank you so much. We're excited to have you.
No, thank you very much. Okay.
I'll echo that as well. Thank you so much. You have awesome experience, so I'm sure you'll be a fantastic addition to the committee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your volunteering.
Sure. All right.
So the Human Resources Board is a three-member board, and they hold meetings at least once a year or at such times as it determines. And they're caused to create a classification plan and a salary plan, either through contract with a qualified consultant or on its own, and shall make recommendations to the Personnel Director as to the implementation and administration of those plans. The position of all officers and employees of the town, other than elected officials and positions under the authority of the School Department, shall be classified by titles and groups in the classification plan. The salary plan shall provide minimum and maximum salaries for the groups and positions in the classification plan. And then the Human Resources Board transmit their recommendations regarding the classification plan and salary plan to the Town Administrator, who then submits them to the Select Board pursuant to Easton's Home Rule Charter. So it's a small committee. There's three members. They really do a great job, super important job. We really care a lot about ensuring that our classifications and wage packages are competitive and fair. So you're going to have great experience. Connor, you're on that committee. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything?
Sure. Thank you. It's, the distribution of work for the Human Resources Board is unique, where it's, there's not a lot of kind of recurring business that comes before the board. But then every, at minimum, every five years, it has to come together, working with myself and the HR Director, to spend probably six-plus months going through a internal and external market compensation and classification report. We did do that, I believe, a year and a half ago, so it's not due, so to speak, this year. So I wouldn't expect that we'll be doing that this year. So there won't be, it won't be super active right out of the gate. But we can certainly connect, and I can share those materials with you and start getting your feedback about what you're interested in and connect to the chair as well.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Craig, would you like to make a motion?
So I move to approve Catriona Eldemary as a member of the Human Resource Board with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2027.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, and this is a roll call vote?
Stebbins, Eldemary.
Stacy Eldemary.
Lamb, Eldemary.
Full Genetti, Eldemary?
Bajra, Eldemary.
All right. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
You'll get an email from the clerk with more information, and you'll have to get sworn in.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals appointment. We have Tom Skinner with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2028. Are you, Tom? Come on up, Tom. So the Zoning Board of Appeals, I should have done the charge before we started talking about the other one. I was not prepared on that one. Hold on one second. Oh, I don't have the charge in there, in there for, oh, wait a minute, I do. I'm not showing it.
It's just very brief because it's from state law.
It's a state law. The Board of Appeals is responsible for hearing applications for certain special permits, variances, and administrative appeals relevant to the town zoning regulations. And the board is comprised of five members with two alternate members appointed by the Select Board. So just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what interests you on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Sure. My name's Tom Skinner. Just coming up on eight years in town. My daughter went through the, went through the schools here in town, and kind of, I have a varied background in operations, process improvement professionally, but also, I've also been called out from by my peers through the years that I have a balanced way of approach of looking at the pros and cons and willing to come, willing to come to anything with an open mind, especially with our town, with anything that we've been, that we could be faced with in the coming years, and looking at the forward and looking, reflecting on the back, on backwards at where the town has been. Just a good way of, just being a good listening ear, a good way of coming, being, being listening, be willing to maybe assert a voice to sometimes where it may not be the best, someone may disagree with, but a good way of, just a good balancing, bringing everyone together to allow the town to be built correctly.
That's great. These regulatory boards are very important because, you know, the town has to be really fair, use best practices, follow the law, the regulations. So it's a, it's a very robust committee, and I think that everything you're describing sounds like it would be a really great fit for that committee as well. Any comments or questions from any board members?
No, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you had an opportunity to see any of the, of the board meetings or participate in?
I have, I have, I have not. It's probably, I should have done my homework, but I didn't do any homework. But it kind of, one thing that I like doing is like parking my preconceived notions of just like letting me go in with eyes wide open, let me, and do that. So I do have some homework with looking at for the board meetings.
Yeah. And also, all of the minutes and the agendas are on documents on demand on the website. So if you go to the town's website down on the lower left, you'll see documents on demand. And when you click on that, you can query for the minutes and agendas of any board or committee. So you could, I think it's referred to as the Board of Appeals on there. So it would be alphabetically, or Appeals Board. It's in the beginning.
Okay.
It's not under Zoning Board of Appeals. So if you want to look at that and familiarize yourself with some of the, you know, the minutes and meetings that have happened in the past, it might just give you a little bit to look at before you get in there.
Sure.
But we get new people, and there's training, and there's things you can do to get up to speed, so...
Oh, I'm sure.
You'll have a good team there helping you be successful. All right. Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
I move to approve Tom Skinner to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2028.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, and this is a roll call vote?
Stebbins, Skinner.
Stacy Skinner.
Lamb, Skinner.
Full Genetti, Skinner.
Bajra, Skinner.
So congratulations. You'll get an email from the town clerk. You'll have to get sworn in. She'll give you the meeting schedule. And we really appreciate, we love seeing new people, somebody who's been here eight years that wants to contribute. We're happy to see that, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Next, we have DPW Contract, DPW 2023-10, Amendment Number Three, Environmental Partners Group for the Bay Road Tank Design Project Administrative Administration and Bid Assistance.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. There's a memo in your packet from Department of Public Works explaining the details along with itemized scope from Environmental Partners Group. This is related to water tank rehabilitation at Bay Road. It covers additional work around bidding assistance and construction administration. There was a bid protest under the standard public bidding. At the outset of a project, there was some extra services required. I'm had to respond to and manage that. A lot of that was partially offset by a reduction in the hours needed for resident engineering representatives on site. Projects complete, this amendment's the final adjustment to the engineering contract. It's $3,250 for a previous amount of $194,250. That $3,250 delta would be funded out of unspent contingency of 1.58 million, and we recommend award.
Okay. Any questions?
I move to approve Contract DPW 2023-10, Amendment Number Three, Environmental Partners Group, Bay Road Tank Design Project Administration and Bid Assistance in the amount of $3,250.
Second.
That's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next, we have Updating Notification of a Butters Policy and Legal Hearing Posting Newspaper Payment Policy. Connor?
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. In your packet are a series of memos from our Senior Executive Assistant, Elizabeth Haig, outlining recommended changes with some of the administrative processes that we have in our office relating to licenses that the board administers. So typically, for an administrative change, we wouldn't come to the board because we, it's not really at your policy level. But where this is really related to licenses that you are the issuing authority on, we wanted to notify you of what our intent was and request your support and consent on doing so, given they're your licenses. The first is regarding the notification of a butters and the legal hearing posting requirements. So for many of your licenses, particularly around alcohol licenses, there are requirements imposed on us by state law and regulation that you can only make a decision on, for instance, a new alcohol license at a public hearing, which is a different posting standard than a meeting, with that hearing notice advertised in a paper, and often with a copy of that hearing notice that we produce being sent by certified mail to the butters, which depending on the number of butters could be a meaningful cost. Currently, the town covers, the Select Board's office covers the cost and administrative work involved in publishing legal ads and mailing the certified notices to butters for certain license applications. That is not required. That's something the town has done by practice as a courtesy. However, other regulatory boards like planning already have, for years, had the practice already have for years had the practice that we are recommending you shift to, which is that the applicant would reimburse the town for those costs, that they would pay for the cost of advertising for the hearing that their application is causing. These are obviously not the practices that we have tried to embrace over time of being more business friendly and having easier application processes. But where we're going through the aftermath of the failed override, continuing to cut positions and preparing for more budget cuts going into '27, I think it's reasonable that we, at a minimum, bring this board and department into consistent practice with other regulatory boards. So that's the first piece. I don't know if there's any questions about it. Elizabeth did a lot of the, I think, really great work to summarize it and show some materials that we could use as part of the application to help make sure people are getting walked through it.
So when you say that that the applicant pays for it, do they do they you said reimburse the town. So they reimburse the town, but the town still has to do the labor to make it happen? Or did I misunderstand?
No, I'm sorry. So for certain aspects, the town would do the labor, I believe, like post sending the generating the actual notice, sending it to the newspaper, we would still handle that because obviously it's a legal notice. We need to do it. But the pulling of the assessors list, which, you know, these are older protocols that preexist. We have a front-facing GIS app now that you could generate your own Butters list. There's no it's the same. The public has access to the same tool we use. So for things like that, they would take a copy of the hearing notice, they would pull their own list, and they would do the certified mailing, which we currently do in-house, and pay for the cost of a postage, which for certified mailing is substantial. It's not like 50 cents a letter.
They'd have to show us the green certif-
Correct. Yes.
I don't know the name of it.
The certified send receipt, I believe. Yes.
And do we have to do we get to see what they're sending? Or is there a format for that?
They just send the hearing notice.
Just the hearing notice. Okay.
They're not. They're not sending anything opining on it or anything like that. It's just the law requires that certain establishments like for alcohol have to send. It's specific. Correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, but it's specific that the requirement is not sending like a generic notice. It's the hearing notice, right?
Okay.
So, yeah. So it would have to be the hearing notice.
Any comments or questions?
Nope. No comments or questions.
Okay.
So could I ask the board to consider a motion to approve that adjustment?
I move to approve the updated notification of a Butters policy and hearing posting newspaper payment policy.
Second.
So that's Bodra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Second sub-bullet to this item is similar vein again, and we don't typically, you know, it's our responsibility to handle the day-to-day administrative items. But where this is germane to your minutes, and if the board is open to this, we would probably expand this throughout town over time. Wanted to bring it to your level and get your feedback or hopefully your consent, which is to continue trying to streamline and minimize labor hours that are going towards certain tasks, including generating minutes, to just give the board's approval on us using AI assistance, basically to take transcripts of certain meetings to generate summaries. We would still have staff ensuring that the legally required components of minutes under open meeting law, the motions, the seconds, what the motion was, what the vote was, who was present, all those things, we will still certify and make sure we are compliant. But where minutes have a requirement to have a general summary of discussion, they're not transcripts. They never have been. But it's time intensive for an employee to either physically be at a meeting or to summarize what can sometimes be three, four-hour meetings of discussions where the essential bits that we must have are those votes. We will still make sure that those are captured, but we can save a pretty significant amount of time if for those meetings that are broadcast that have transcripts that we have AI-generated summaries. And again, Elizabeth and our office did a huge amount of work on this. And then Suzanne in the Planning Department, which we just cut a staff position out of. The Plan Department supports, I think, eight boards, and they now have one admin, which is completely unsustainable, but that's where we're at. This also helps us really put the pressure on. We need to innovate and find ways to reduce labor hours. So Suzanne worked with Elizabeth on that as well to test it. And I think it's viable. We obviously will keep a close eye on it. We checked with legal counsel because obviously it's using AI to summarize public meetings. But these are this is not taking anything that's not spoken in the public realm. And we still have a staff person who's submitting minutes, take a look and ensure that it matches. So.
I think it's a great idea. Any comments, questions?
When we started doing this at work, and it's actually added a lot of efficiency in my life. So you do have to read through it, of course, as you say.
Right.
It's really critical because it does some wacky things with what it hears. But
Yes. It's not perfect.
As you mentioned, the human review will be part of it, which is good. So I think it's a positive move forward.
I think it will make the minutes more consistent, too, across the board. I do the minutes sometimes for the cultural district.
Right.
If the person's not there that does them. And that's a pretty light lift because we're really just talking about events and so forth. And it takes me a couple of hours to sit back, look through my scribbly notes all over the place, figure out what the and remember it. And if I don't do it, like within a couple of days after the meeting, it takes me even longer because I have to remember what really happened. So it's it's a heavy lift to do minutes for any any place. And I think it's a really great use of technology to do that.
And I think the idea for us would be to start with the boards that Elizabeth and Suzanne are staffing because they're familiar with using this these tools. But over time, spread that out because many of our boards have no staff at all. And with this support, volunteers could hopefully cut down on the amount of free labor that they are contributing as well.
Which tools are you exploring, out of curiosity?
What's the?
I'm downloading the transcripts from from.
From Zoom?
Yeah. No, actually, from YouTube.
Okay. Right. From ECAT YouTube.
And I created it to co-pilot.
Okay.
And just asking it very specifically to create a summary and I have it tweaked, you know, if it needs to be more detailed or less detailed.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah.
Excellent. So one of the things we'll need to be considering as we move forward is obviously internally for our staff that have access to co-pilot through our enterprise license, that's we will have access to that. But obviously, volunteers don't necessarily. So we'll be thoughtful before broadening it, you know, for folks who are going to be used, something that's open source like ChatGPT or anything. But again, this is all public. Nothing in these meetings is not public.
Right.
So.
Great. All right. Craig?
So I move to approve the automated meeting minutes proposal submitted by Elizabeth.
Second.
That's Bodra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next, reapportment of Jennifer Stacey as the Select Board Representative to the Committee for Climate Action Planning. The Select Board's going to be asked to vote on the reapportment of Jennifer Stacey as the Board's Representative to the Committee for Climate Action Planning. Jen currently serves as Chair of the Committee and has provided strong leadership in advancing its goals. Are you still willing to serve?
I am still willing to serve. It's it's been a tough committee, but we're we're making major progress. And I want to thank Sean, who has been by my side, supporting the effort to keep it advancing throughout and looking forward to sharing some outputs from this in the coming months with the Select Board. So.
Well, I thank you for your expertise. You know, all of our Select Board members that serve on other subcommittees as well have an expertise in those areas. And it is, it's a lot of it's a lot of extra work. Some of these committees meet during the day, and people have to take a break from their work, or you're coming right from work to get to another additional meeting at night, and especially with families with kids and homework and sports and things like that. I know that it's it can be a real, real challenge. So I really want to thank you and tell you how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I move to reappoint Jen Stacey. Jennifer Stacey is Select Board Representative to the Committee for Climate Action Planning.
Second.
That's Bodra and Lamb with a roll call vote.
Stebbins Stacey.
Stacy Stacey.
Lamb Stacey.
Paul Janetti Stacey.
Bodra Stacey.
Excellent. The next is a contract award, Southeastern Regional Services Group, Sursage for paper from WB Mason. Craig? I mean, not Craig, sorry. Connor?
Sure. There's an attached recommendation from Sursage, which is the Southeastern Regional Services Group, which is a procurement consortium we are a member of for routine and bulk office supplies. This is for fiscal '26 paper supplies to be awarded to WB Mason. We recommend approval of these supplies. This may look familiar because there was previously a recommended award to a different vendor, but there was after a fact discovered by Sursage a clerical error on the price per on the unit price per carton in that submittal that, when corrected, changed the low bid to WB Mason. So you were being asked to revote to the new, actually lower-priced vendor.
Okay.
I move to approve the contract award, Southeastern Regional Services Group for Paper, WB Mason.
Second.
That's Bodra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. The next is acceptance of a resignation from Amira Amawi Serhan from the Human Rights Committee. Her term ended on June 30th, 2027. So we have a memo with her resignation and want to thank, I'm assuming it's her. Craig, am I correct?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank her for her service on that board. Somebody want to make a motion in a second?
I move to accept the resignation of Amira Amawi Serhan from the Human Rights Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
So that's Bodra and Lamb, and this is a roll call vote.
Stebbins Amawi Serhan.
Stacy Amawi Serhan.
Lamb Amawi Serhan.
Paul Janetti Amawi Serhan.
Bodra Amawi Serhan.
Okay. Next, we have another resignation from Ashley Raffeld from the Cultural Council with a term ending June 30th, 2026. We do have a memo. I want to thank Ashley for her work on that committee. She's I do know that she has done a really great job. That committee evaluates proposals and grant applications for funding through local cultural for local cultural events. They can only serve for a certain amount of years on that committee. And I know that either last year or the year before, a few people's term was up and there were a bunch of new people. And that can sometimes cause some lack of how to move forward with the processes. And she really stepped in and helped with that. So thank you to Ashley. So Craig?
So I move to approve the resignation from the Cultural Council, Ashley Raffeld, with a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
That's Bodra and Lamb.
Stebbins Raffeld.
Stacy Raffeld.
Lamb Raffeld.
Paul Janetti Raffeld.
Bodra Raffeld.
Excellent. All right. Next, the acceptance of the meetings of July 7th, 2025.
So I move, Roger.
Second.
Bodra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator notes.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. I have a few. I want to acknowledge the Fire Department, I think specifically Group Three, for since your last meeting on the 13th, they have responded to a fire on Allen Road. They did a great job. The injuries were minor, and their quick action prevented major damage. So really appreciate their work. Obviously, I think everyone's quite sensitive right now on the Wakefall River to Fire Department staffing. And obviously, it's a bunch of challenges and the impact that's having on our department. So I wanted to acknowledge Group Three and say thank you to the Fire Department. Planning Department, we just alluded to it when talking about moving to, you know, AI assistance for minutes. Heading into fiscal '26 ahead of the override election, there were some positions that were funded, but we that became vacant, that we froze and didn't backfill. We didn't hire to see where the outcome of those electoral choices were. There are certain positions that are funded, even in the non-override budget for fiscal '26 that I am not filling on a move-forward basis because I anticipate additional severe cuts to operations going into '27 for both the town and schools. One of those will be, we aforementioned administrative position in the Planning Department. I think there are times where folks say, okay, it's one admin. But when your departments are five people, that's actually 20% of your staff. So that's quite significant. And due to this, the department will no longer be open for walk-ins. We will still be available. Folks can call the Planning Department, leave a voicemail for what their inquiry is, whether that's about planning, conservation, wetland inquiries. Staff will do everything they can to get back to folks as soon as they can. There's also fillable forms in the hallway, which is now closed, on the second floor, where people can fill out requests for follow-up. But we can't lose one of two front-facing positions in a department and just continue to operate the same way. That's not feasible. So so that will be going into effect. Similar Budget Subcommittee had its first meeting of planning for fiscal '27 today. A few hours ago, it was a good conversation, a challenging topic. Obviously, we have continuation of not the pace process, but the navigating through the ramifications of where we stand now as an organization and as a community in the wake of a failed override, where the choices going into next year, including small ones along the way, like the one I just touched on, are going to be probably as difficult, if not in some ways more, than the budget cuts that had to be made going into '26. Because that was not a kind of one-time problem, as we, I think, spoke about at length, that goes away just because the override was rejected, which is voters' right to do. Those underlying structural challenges with health insurance are not going away immediately of contractual costs for transportation, things like that. So we're going to continue to face really strong headwinds. And so I appreciate School Committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board reps on Budget Subcommittee for getting that going really early. And that'll be really important for us as a community as we move forward. More positive news, the tax exemption, the senior means tested tax exemption that the board may recall was passed two years ago with one of the building project debt exclusions was a special act because this is not a program that exists in state law. So we petitioned the state legislature. They did pass it into law. That program is now going live for fiscal year 2026. Applications are due by the end of September. I do not want to get eligibility criteria wrong by speaking off the cuff, so I'm just not going to. If people are interested, if you are a senior in Easton and you think this might be something worth looking at, you can visit the Assessor's Office, go to our website, easton.ma.us, or contact the Assessor's Office and get information. Those applications will be due by the end of September. The board may recall, we signed the IMA with the city of Brockton in January for sewer capacity at the industrial park, which is something the town has been interested in for decades. We obviously have some funding constraints right now. And so we've been working with Old Colony Planning Council, our regional planning agency, to submit for state and federal matching grant funds. We've submitted for over $1 million to the United States for industrial park sewer design, hoping to hear something on that in the coming months or so. We'll keep the board informed. But work on that is continuing because that's a, you know, 20 and 30-year infrastructure project that we do need to keep the iron and the fire on, even when we're facing operating challenges. And finally, wanted to just give the board a heads up that at some point in the coming months, Director Field, Director Nightingale and I will be in front of you with some policy choices to make regarding curbside trash pickup. I think that's something that's also in the news a lot lately. Thankfully, our, you know, in Easton, our services are not interrupted. We're with waste management. But as with so many other things, the cost of that service being provided is growing and becoming more and more of a challenge, not just for the cost that then gets passed on to residents, but also for the growing indirect impact it has on public works, administrative and highway staff, which were cut in the failed override. So we'll have an enterprise fund fee analysis we've requested from Waste Management because our current contract with them ends at the end of fiscal '26, a proposal. And so we'll be bringing some information to the board on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Sean?
Brief update on the Climate Action Plan. We're nearing towards the end of the process. We have a couple of upcoming meetings with the Advisory Group in early August. And then we're also having a business roundtable to gather feedback and share resources with the business community that we were able to work with the Chamber of Commerce with to make that connection. And we have a pretty decent turnout that is expected. It's going to precede the Advisory Group meeting on August 6. And then after that, we'll get final feedback that will go into the plan, and then will eventually come as a draft to you for review in the next couple of months or so, and then final adoption with the recommendation from C cap preceding. And so that'll be in the in the next couple of months.
Great. Where is it on August 6? What time?
It is in Frothingham Hall, 6 to 9.
Excellent. So any business or any member of the public in?
Oh, sorry. The Business Roundtable is at 3:30 on on the same date at Frothingham Hall, 3:30 to 5.
Great. That's going to be a long day for that committee.
Yeah. Yep. We'll be camped out at 15 barrows.
All right. Jamie?
No, thank you.
Jen?
I think we have not met since the parade, correct? Or was I away? No, we haven't met. Okay. So the parade was awesome. It was really amazing to see the entire community either watching the parade or in the parade.
I think every single person was either in it or watching.
Yeah. It was really just a really cool experience. So, you know, hats off to the committee that has been doing amazing work on pulling these events together and really doing a great job bringing the community together. So.
Yeah. I'll echo that. I think that was the biggest event Easton has ever had in the history of this community. I've lived here for 45 years, and I've never seen anything like that. That was incredible. So thank you to the Tricentennial Committee for that.
Did a great job.
Yeah, I want to thank the Tricentennial Committee. They did a heck of a job. All the volunteers that coordinated the, I mean, it was two and a half hours long parade. It was it was amazing. And it was a lot of work that they put in to make sure that it came to fruition. And I very much appreciated the Select Board being there on the on the Langwater float. And it was it was nice to see people. Lots of smiles, lots of waves. It was great. Appreciate it.
Well, I was, you know, I haven't really given a lot of thought about the time capsule. I know what a time capsule is and blah, blah, blah. But I started thinking, so it was my daughter's 25th birthday. She'll be 75 the next the next, you know, 50 years, right? So I'm thinking about who who put the stuff in that capsule 50 years ago. 50 years ago is a huge span for technology. Like now, I can't wait to open the time capsule. Like I can't even imagine what's in there. So it was it's been a really wonderful year so far. Next year is going to feel so boring. The cultural district is really going to have to step up its game. But but all the volunteers that made this happen have just been incredible.
Also, our police fire and DBW put an immense amount of effort and Health and Community Services, they put an immense an immense amount of effort into making the logistics seem seamless. There was a lot of moving parts in the background, but for them, they did a really great job. Shout out to our search team as well, who all really made it as successful as it could, despite hundreds of floats and cars and people on small bikes with big tires. There was just everything that you can imagine that was there, and they helped to make it happen, too.
And you and Corey Honan and Dave Clifton.
Yeah, Corey, yeah, Corey, too. Corey, Corey deserves the Nobel Peace Prize for the work that he did to make that happen. It was really incredible.
We just had to wait on the side of the street until our float showed up.
Wait for a wagon.
I just want to mention that all the orange barrels going down Washington Street is such an exciting thing to see because that means that the light at the end of Elm Street is finally in process, which makes me really happy, living on Elm Street. But then I also realized that I'm probably never going to be able to get out of Elm Street for the next couple of years. So I can't wait to see that move forward.
For term pain for long-term gain.
Right, exactly. I won't be calling to complain about the road. All right. So Mr. Skinner, I didn't know, did you did you have anything that you wanted to ask?
No, I was already here, so.
Okay. I didn't know if you changed your mind or?
No.
Okay. We're going to be going into executive session under purpose three of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Easton Firefighters, Local 2790 Collective Bargaining Unit. And we will not be returning to open session. So if somebody wants to make a motion in a second to enter into executive session.
I'm we enter into executive session.
Second.
That's Bodra and Lamb. Roll call.
Roll call.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes. Great. And I just want to give Joe a shout out for ECAT. Just a great job. We appreciate it. You pay attention to our meetings. And if people want to see more of ECAT and Joe, Joe has a talk show on there and really talks about some great things. And you can also look at that and also consider a donation to ECAT because they're the ones who keep getting this information to you. So thank you, Joe, and your team at ECAT.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.